Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board of Education Board Meeting. We will now ask Mrs. Barbara Sales to come for our pledge of allegiance and we will stand for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, you may be seated. I would now entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or anything? If not, a motion is in...
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Under communications tonight, I will start this off, and it is with mixed feelings, but I will. The Board wishes to recognize Director Marilyn Mathis as she facilitates her last school board meeting due to her impending retirement effective October 1st, 2009. A reception to honor her years of service to the Murfreesboro City Schools will be held on tomorrow, September 23rd, 2009, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the John Pittard Elementary School. Is there anything any Board members would like to say during this time to Mrs. Mathis?
I'd like to say that it's been a real privilege to me to work with you, and it's been my goal to imitate you. You've been my mentor, I've learned so much from you, and if I could have the humility, the intelligence, the drive, the organization, not to mention the classy good looks, I mean, I just have it all made. I would have it made. I mean, I really, it's been such a privilege, and I'm gonna miss having you sit right in that chair. I'm not gonna miss you as a friend, though. It's been a wonderful privilege, and it's just, it's hard to say goodbye.
I appreciate that so much, and I do hope we'll retain our friendship. Thank you.
How can I follow that? That was so perfect, so all I can say is absolutely ditto that, and thank you so very much. Your heart has always been with the children of Murfreesboro City Schools, and you have made us very proud. Thank you, Ms. Mathis.
Thank you.
If you all do not mind, if you would join me as your board chair and stand and give our director a standing ovation. Well, we can't let you get away without working you a little bit, so we're gonna turn over to you, Mrs. Mathis. Oh, sorry!
I would want everybody else to have their chance first. I guess I've been on the Board the longest while Ms. Mathis was serving, and I'd just personally like to thank you for your service to the children. Every time I've had any discussion with you, it was always what was, your decision was based on what was best for the children. And over the years, I know you made some very difficult decisions, and I know that a lot of other people in your position probably would have avoided making those decisions, and I admire you for having the professionalism to stand up and do what was right. And it's, I think the Murfreesboro City Schools has been lucky to have you as a director, and as I think we will soon find as we go into our search, well, it's gonna be, I guess it's probably not a nice to say, big shoes to follow, is it? But anyway, I think that you've done a great job, and I've enjoyed working with you and appreciate what you've done for the city school system.
Thank you so much. Well, I'm certainly honored by your recognition of me, and I really appreciate the opportunity I've had for the last 26 years to serve in this school system. And honestly, I love the children so much, I do hope that my decisions have been based on what's in their best interest. I know one of the things that was really important to me is that we build schools that reflect the way we feel about our children. I know the way a building looks really has not a lot to do with what's being taught inside, but I think it shows how much we care. And during my tenure, I've had the opportunity to coordinate six new schools for our system, and I'm so proud that they don't look like jails, because I do think some of the older schools had that look. And I, you know, it takes all of us working together to bring that about. I remember how the city council was so willing to work with us on those projects and to make sure that we did not become overcrowded. I can only remember one time when I felt like that we were in that overcrowded stage, but quickly we were out of it. And all the things that have been done as we've all worked together as a team have reflected what we really do believe, and that we do love children, and we want to make a difference from that for them. And of course, what's inside our buildings, that's what counts. I always recognize our teachers first, because I feel like they are the foundation of what we do. When they go in and close that door, they are the ones making the direct contact, making a direct difference for children. And then we have so many support folks, our principals as our teacher leaders, as our school leaders, and our staff at the central office providing support, and then all the other support services, some of the folks who don't get recognized enough, the people who bring the children to school, the people who feed the children, the people who make sure that they are healthy and monitor that for us, our technology folks, our secretaries who are the first people on the front lines when people come in and make that first impression. And then, of course, you all regulating everything and making sure that we are all empowered to do our jobs. So, it has, it has been a fabulous 26 years, and it's because of people like you who make sure that we all have what we need and make sure that we're all working together as a team, and I do appreciate you all so much. Thank you. I do want to congratulate Principal Katrina Stevens. She has been named the Coordinated School Health Principal of the Year for the State of Tennessee. She is not here tonight, so next, at your next month's meeting, maybe you all will agree to give her a little recognition. We'll have a little clip of a video showing her receiving her award. She was honored in a statewide ceremony, and of course, she has done a lot at scales to try to make sure that the children out there are healthy and that they know what habits to develop to remain healthy. And one of our teachers, Suzie Willis, the third grade teacher at Kason Lane, has been selected Channel 2 Teacher of the Week. She'll be featured on Thursday from 6:00 to 10:00, and then again on Friday from 6:00 to 7:00, so you may want to watch Suzie Willis. We're very proud of her. And congratulations, Board Member Nancy Phillips. Nancy was awarded Boardmanship Level 3 at our recent TSBA District Meeting, which, by the way, was held right here in Murfreesboro, at no, none other than John Pittard Elementary. And I want to thank Roseanne publicly, Roseanne Barton, for sponsoring that, and Cheryl Harris for helping to make the arrangements. It was beautifully done, and I've heard a lot of very nice compliments. And then an announcement for you to remind you that the Tennessee School Boards Association's Leadership Conference and Convention will be held November 14th through the 17th. The theme this year is Empowering Excellence. And I hope all of you can read to our children on Thursday. Read to Succeed will be sponsoring Reading in the Schools Day. Then we thank some of our sponsors. Smyrna Bowling has given $500 to Kason Lane and $500 to Mitchell Nielsen Elementary. And Mitchell Nielsen Elementary also extends thanks to Stones River Church of Christ and Calvary Baptist Church. They have donated backpacks to students, and Office Depot has donated two-way radios. And our Miss Eagle thanks Ms. Kristy Hawkins and Ms. Cynne Peterson. They've awarded $500 each from a state farm grant. And Jeffrey Herring, who's with Insured Financial Solutions, has donated $500. And thanks to Kroger Store on Kason Lane, who's given scales, $800 worth of supplies. And Felicia Jackson, who is a fourth grade teacher at Kason Lane, shares that four of her students were recognized in the Tennessee Farm Bureau Agriculture Classroom Poster Contest, and we congratulate Brandon Terman. He won third place, and then we had three children, an honorable mention, or four children, Marissa McCall, Michelle Davis, Mackenzie Og, and Kim Von Saharath. And we congratulate all these children on their agriculture posters. And Ms. Wade, Chairman Wade, these are all the items of communication tonight.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Mathis. Now ready for our consent items?
Move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Mathis, action items?
Yes, you will find behind tab 2, two new board policies and one revised policy. They all had to do with use of the Internet. And I think Kelly Baker had brought these to you at your June retreat. I hope all of you've had a chance to study them. One thing about board policies, you can revise them every month if you wish to. So if you find next month that there would need to be some changes in these, of course, we'll continue to review and make changes as necessary. The first policy is PER 44, it's Employee Use of Internet and Electronic Mail. Now, we had had a policy, or an administrative directive on use of email, but we need to put all of this into a policy and to make it as thorough as possible, to cover just about everything you can possibly cover, I think you'll note, including having employees sign that they have read this, they agree with it, and they will abide by it, and telling them what will happen if they don't. And then PER 45 has to do with webpages, teachers setting up webpages, and the school system setting up webpages, and some guidelines for that. And then STU 37 is a revision of our student use of Internet. And we've pretty well been doing this, in fact, these things are included in our student handbook, so there's not much of a change on the student use of Internet, except that we've put some of the things that were in directives into policy. I think it just gives it a little bit more clout when you do that. So Kelly, as always, has done a superior job researching and making sure that these are as up-to-date as possible, comparing them with the Tennessee School Boards Association policy, and I do recommend your approval of these two new policies and the one revised policy.
I move that we approve the two policies as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? Ms. Baker, do you have a question or any comments that you want to make?
I just wanted to share with you, I shared at the retreat that these policies are not only based on the federal statutes that deal with educational use of the Internet, but the state legislature had revised some of their statutes regarding Internet use, and they're incorporating those changes and those requirements. And like Ms. Mathis said, pulled a lot of what we were already doing from the administrative directive into the policy as required by the revised state statutes.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Were there any questions from any of the Board members before we take the vote?
I have a question.
Ms. Duggan, and then Dr. Andrews.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Baker for the updates. They're very well done, and I think this is very timely that we keep this out before our teachers and even our students, and for parents to be aware even of, I know students sign these things, I didn't know if, I know this type of thing's on the system website. I didn't know if, and I know you can link from a school website to the system website, but I think it'd also be nice if maybe the student use of Internet was readily available to parents at all times, so they could just have kind of a refresher course themselves. But these are well-written, and I think they're written in a manner that they protect our students as much as we can do that.
And you'll recall, it's actually in our student handbook. We went on and put it in there since we didn't have the opportunity to approve it. So it is in the student handbook, and also there's a link on our website, which is required under the federal statutes, that will take you to a federal website that empowers parents with a lot of information on protecting their children when they're using the Internet. So if any parents are interested in looking at that, they can get to that link on our homepage on our website.
And it is a great resource with lots of outstanding things for our parents.
And just one reminder, our network provider, when children are at school, blocks nearly everything. So while they're at school, they have very little chance, but I think it's very good to teach good habits and how to use it when you're at home, too, so.
Dr. Andrews?
The, under, let's see which one this is, it is, I think it's 30, STU 37, under Internet Safety Measures After See, it says a written parental consent shall be required prior to the student being granted access to electronic media involving district technological resources. That could be read that they couldn't get on the computer at all, even if they weren't on the Internet. Is that the intent of that?
It's intended for when they, because even when they get on that computer, and granted, our younger children would not have this capability, but some of our older children may be able to sneak onto the web when they are on one of our computers, since they are all linked to the web. So that's one reason that is in there, and that was signed by the parents in the handbook when they got the student handbook. That acknowledgement form was in the handbook.
Okay, so every single parent in our system has already signed that? Every single one?
Well, they are supposed to, and we hold our principals accountable for assuring that that happens on a classroom-by-classroom basis. It's very important, so I would think that they have done that.
Okay.
Ms. Ridley, if you'll call the row.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Ms. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
If she cares.
Thank you, Mrs. Ridley. Reports and information.
Okay, several reports for you tonight, one very important one, Mr. Wilkerson is going to provide for you, and that's behind tab 3. Our personnel update, we, I told you last time that we hold and try to give a complete update on all of our teachers hired. I think there's some 46 here, and he's going to tell you about what we've done, and thank you for the excellent job your department does, Mr. Wilkerson.
See, I do want to thank my department, Joe Lassiter, Gloria Williams, and Pam Holden, for, they do a great job in human resources. We do have 32 new teachers hired, and also there are currently 14 interims that are working in the system. This was through September 8th, that was, we have to have a cutoff date, so some of these teachers are no longer interims, those ones that were on leave are back at work. But the first 32 that you see are very happy people, they now are working in Murfreesboro City Schools, and I'm proud to report that all is well at this point. I do want to point out that on the second page, I'd made a mistake on the second item, and if you'll notice, for the second grade teacher at M&amp;P, that should be a retirement by Ms. Kilgore. And there is a corrected page there on the tables in the pink, I do want to point that out, that one teacher was moved from one grade level to the other and didn't go deep enough to find out exactly who had been, who had left. So that Ms. Kilgore did retire, and that teacher was hired to replace her.
Any questions about the personnel report?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is our summer school report, and Crystal Ferris will provide that for you. She's our supervisor in our extended school program. Ms. Ferris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a little bit shorter than Mr. Wilkerson, so. We had excellent participation this summer in summer school again. I'd like to thank the principals and the teachers and the other departments, such as school nutrition and transportation, who all worked together to make summer school a possibility. Our number, our total number of students in all of our programs this summer was 945. So we had 945 children extending their school year and sticking with us through the summer, which also meant we had 79 teachers who took some time off of their summer break to work with these kids. We had a slight decrease in our summer school numbers this year than we did last year, and this was primarily because we spent more of our extended contracts, we used more of those during the school year, and focused on after-school tutoring. So our number went down by about 150, so not by much, but by 150, and those students we did serve during the school year, meeting their academic needs after school, doing after-school tutoring, and during intercession. Primarily, we have two areas of focus for summer school, kinder camp and academics. And kinder camp is where we serve our incoming kindergarteners, and we acclimate them to their new school environment, do some pre-testing with them, get them good and ready for the beginning of the school year. And our academics, we focus on math, reading, writing, science, some ELL opportunities, and technology. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Ms. Phillips, answer question.
I know how important and effective the kinder camp that we have in all of our schools, they just do such a fabulous job. I'm wondering, do we do any marketing of that, of the kinder camps?
The schools do during registration. They, they have information out about their kinder camps, and the children at that time have the opportunity to sign up.
I wish we could put it in the paper, too. I wonder what it would take, because I think it would, it would reach perhaps more families that on that hairy registration day maybe overlooked that, lost the paper about it or something. Because I think our teachers do such a great job, and it really is helpful to the kindergarteners, the incoming kindergarteners, so.
Okay, I'll make note of that for next year.
Ms. Wade?
Ms. Duggan?
Sorry.
Earlier, I mentioned this, but with our youth leadership camp, I had the opportunity to visit in that on several occasions, but that is an outstanding program also, and I really would love to see us, if our finances will allow us at all, to offer that, maybe on two sites, on, you know, both sides of town, so maybe more of our students can participate, because I think the younger that kids can get a, you know, a greater insight about what leadership is and experience some of that, it's really great, and I would just love to see us work toward that.
For those of you not familiar with that program, it is, it is a very good program, and then two fifth graders are nominated at each school to participate in that program.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And behind tab 5, you will find something very interesting. It's a utilities usage report. Gary Anderson has put in place some incentives to help encourage all of us to be conservative in the way that we use energy. I'm gonna let him share with you some of the things he's done, and of course, the principals love it, because it means a little bit more money for them.
Based on the success of John Pittard with the system we have there for HVAC, and realizing that electric rates are gonna go up, much as 20%, it was announced at the time we instituted an energy conservation program for the district, and we monitored it every single month. As you look at this chart, we've broken it down by school, by kilowatt hour, by natural gas, by water gallons, and showed an increase or decrease in usage. If it's a green box, that means they saved that much. For example, Bellwood saved 50,400 kilowatt hours. What's interesting, we look district-wide, we saved over the previous year 619,000 kilowatt hours. And in natural gas and cubic feet per hundred, we saved 32,854, and in water gallons, we saved over 4 million gallons of water. And what's really interesting about that piece is, by doing this, we discovered that two schools had leaks, that we probably never would have found if we weren't monitoring it month to month, and that was Bellwood and Discovery School, both had leaks that we were able to find and fix. And so obviously, next year, we're hoping that that'll, that'll actually be banned. Based on the previous year and this year, we saved an amount of $131,000 of utilities that we didn't use, that if we'd gone at the same pace, we would have used that amount more. So, Ms. Mathis, came with the idea of sharing this money with...
That was your idea, Mr. Anderson.
Sharing this money with the schools, and we asked the principal, says, would you like this done based on your actual performance? Now, I asked that question before I handed the sheet out. Would you like it split evenly? And they said, as a team, they wanted to split the money evenly based on the size of their school, whatever. So as you can see, it's going to return for our schools, now they disagree. As you can see, that we're going to be returning to the schools $43,000 to use for teacher and services, and things that deal with helping our teachers and our students in our schools. So I think the, we should really congratulate the teachers, the principals, the staff, the extended school program, the food service, there's one that had a little increase at Pittard, they went up 100, and the only thing that's engaged on natural gas at Pittard is the kitchen, so that just means they cook more good meals at Pittard this year. That's the only thing, that's the only possible explanation that one can be. I just wanted to congratulate them and thank them for their hard work in making this an effort that actually saved our district money that we would have spent if they had not taken on this initiative.
That's a fabulous result. That's really great.
And thanks for the credit, Mr. Anderson, but you deserve it on that one, I assure you, he came up with that idea, and of course, this is gonna give money back to the schools. They're not going to complain, they'll try to pay attention to it. We really appreciate that.
Good job, yeah.
Mr. Hoppe?
You may have mentioned it, and I missed it while I was looking at the figures. Besides the water problem, though, give us an idea of some of the types of things that we're doing to, because we had a consultant a few years ago to...
We utilized the consultants, what they put in that, into that book, and when we went out and talked with our engineering and architecture firm about the type of lighting to put in, we've replaced some lighting, I think it was Northfield and Black Fox, caught some of it. One of the major things was, you can change the mechanical part of the utilities, but it's changing the habits that can actually generate a lot more. Simple things like shutting the doors when the kids are out in the playgrounds, making sure that our, that our custodial service company turns the lights off every night as they leave. So we're changing habits more than anything else. We have other things that we're getting ready to institute if we can get those grants ever approved by the state, that will help us in some other areas, like turning lights off when no one's in the room after 20 minutes. Simple, simple measures like that that we're looking at. But mostly, it was monitoring it, keeping an eye on turning lights off when you're not in a room, you go outside, making sure the water's not running in a sink or a toilet, and you can see, it was pretty substantial in what they did.
I hope we'll continue to, as we can afford it, to do additional things like the low-flow facets and some of those type things. It might cost a little bit, but maybe we could do it over a period of time, and...
We're looking at things that save us the most and the highest percentage of it, and the first thing is HVAC and lighting are the two major things that save us the most money that we have, that we can invest in. So we're starting there in that arena, and looking at other things, like even when we put the roof on our Black Fox, we put an extra insulation on the new roofing of Black Fox, just so we wouldn't have the heat going up or the cold, you know, going up through the roof. So we're trying to do, as we do things, we're trying to do it the most energy conserving way.
Sounds good.
Your next report is our monthly revenue and expenditure report behind tab 6, and we are only reflecting two months into the school year, and our expenses exceed our revenue by about $3.6 million, so the lesson we learn every year at this time is that it's very important to have a fund balance to cover that until the revenue catches up, which is typically February or March. I don't know that there's anything in particular, but if Mr. Anderson has any thoughts he'd like to share with you on our report?
Just that we're on track right now where we think we should be for revenues and on expenses. Obviously, the revenue, the big pieces of the revenue, the property tax and the sales tax, we haven't received nothing as of yet, and that, that lags behind. tax, we haven't received nothing as of yet, and that lags behind. But everything seems to be on target this year.
I'd like to echo, excuse me, I'd like to echo Ms. Duggan expressed interest, I think, a couple of months, or a month or so ago, about us doing some projections on, I saw in the paper the other day, sales tax was like $250,000 for the last quarter, down 250. And I remind the board, all this budget is based on what we think's coming in and not necessarily what is coming in. So I'd like to see us do some, maybe some attempts to estimate how much, how we're going to operate if things don't materialize as we anticipate, make some projections.
Be glad, as soon as we get some sales tax numbers in, we don't have anything to work from yet to get a baseline. Once we start getting that, we can start projecting out and come back to where we think we're at.
Are there any questions for Mr. Anderson?
I think in those, those two days that he may be the acting director, he can fix it all. He'll have it all under control.
He wishes. Sales tax is just going to come flowing in.
Sales tax, everything, yeah.
I had a question, I did.
Which one?
It just takes me a while to cogitate and get it. But the, I was wondering, is it possible to just go ahead and make projections based on if we get 50% of the expected sales tax revenue, or 25%, 75%? Just, I mean, just to go ahead and have some kind of ballpark ideas?
We can put together scenarios when it comes to determining where the money from the expense side's going to come, it's going to, we can make recommendations, but it's kind of a dangerous thing when you're talking about what might happen of a 50% reduction in, in sales tax, because that's, we're talking millions of dollars then.
Yeah.
But I can show you where I think the sales tax will end up after we start getting some things, based on the government reports. And I do watch those very closely, Mr. Hopper. Every month those things come out, I'm looking for them and see where we are, what's going on in the state. Fortunately, Rutherford County has been a little better than the state average as far as not having as much drought. So we've been a little bit insulated, not tremendously, but a little bit.
Ms. Duggan?
Just to follow up on what Mr. Hopper shared, earlier I had to ask about our having a worst-case scenarios budget, but I'm in agreement with you that we should wait. Do you have more information? I also think it would be good for us to stay abreast of what the city's doing with, you know, their employees, just so we're aware there. Because if we don't get any more money next year from the State Department, and we don't get any more locally, we've already dipped into our funds significantly, and we know at some point you can't do that. So I want to see our board be very proactive and not reactive in this situation.
Thank you.
Okay, your last report of the evening that I guess I will be giving at least is the attendance report, and I have some good news to announce on that regard. Doesn't have to do so much with the number of students, but with the percent of attendance, particularly in view of the H1N1 we continually hear about. Mr. Anderson provided me with information showing that 92% of our students are in school. So I think that's pretty phenomenal. I just hope it continues. I'm almost afraid to put this out there in case it were to change. As far as membership, you'll find that on the tab 7, that we have 6,914 K through 6 students. And then over in the far-left corner, you'll see our pre-K students at 376. And of course, these are the regular pre-K. They do not include the special ed pre-K. Special ed is always included in your pre-K through 6 report, or your K through 6 report. As far as comparing this to last year, our membership at the end of the previous month last year is at the bottom of the page there, we're up 41 students from last year, the same month, which is about six tenths of a percent. So we are really about on target with where we budgeted. We had budgeted that we would have 6,890 students. So you can see, we're up just a little bit there. And if we continue to grow all year, maybe we'll get some growth money from the state, and that will help our budget. If the sales tax were not to come in, at least we'd have some growth money to count on. So that's another scenario that I'm sure Mr. Anderson would factor into this. So that's the attendance report, and I think good news on the number of students in school. I'm really pleased with that, and I know you are, too.
Thank you, Mrs. Mathis. Other business?
Comment?
Yes.
Thank you. Things got rolling a minute ago, and everybody was thinking about this. I think you've led this system for a long time.
And I will agree with what Dr. Andrews said in regards to a very attractive young lady. However, I did see you one day out in the Target parking lot, but I wasn't real sure that was you.
Oh, okay.
But you had your, that was your Saturday, Saturday closing.
Oh, okay.
I do thank you. I thank you for the time, and I thank you for the, for the conversations that we have had. We've not always agreed, but that's okay. You've always been very professional with me, and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
If nothing more, and this being your last meeting, and I hope I can speak for this entire board, that it has been a good run. You've been a great captain.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And on that note, we are adjourned.